Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, welcome, everyone. And Mr. Campbell, we let the record reflect that all three trustees are present. And so this is a work in session meeting. And the first item under new business is our community survey. Ms. Ayers, would you like to present that, please?
Yes, sir. Just as a reminder for the board, as well as in the audience, format for this meeting is a little bit different, more discussion purposes. So in each of these topics, we'll have roughly the same presentation, which involves, let's have some items I'll bring up for discussion purposes, and then we'll have time for public comment and board discussion. So we'll go roughly through that format for each topic. The first being the community survey. As you're aware, in February 23, we started collecting a community survey, collected results through April. Advertising was done on the township website, emails to local homeowners associations, community boards at the local grocery stores, shared on township social media, shared with local community groups, shared with local apartment managers to try and solicit responses. Received 418 responses from February 21st to April 17th. Questions were mixed, bag of township operations, goals for the townships, economic development goals, medical marijuana thoughts, and demographics of people filling out the survey. I'm going to discuss in this first section, our economic development, the operations goals here, and then when we get to particularly the medical marijuana topic, we'll discuss those survey results at that point in time. Demographics, we did want to get an idea of who was responding and get an idea of what the average person was looking like. So collected age range, household size, time in Union Township, location of work, area of employment. As you can see here for a few responses, and I would note, this is also linked on our website under special presentations if people have some interest and want to go take a look at it again. So you'll notice, first we have demographic respondents, age range largely focused in the 31 to 65, spread evenly amongst the groups. Household size was overwhelmingly two. Years lived in Union Township, we are talking about long-term residents, which is great to see, staying involved in the community. Why choosing to live in Union Township? Top three answers were housing affordability, family ties, and a safe community. Also wonderful things to see. As we discussed earlier, we were looking at some of the longer-term residents. The overwhelming response was retired when looking at area of employment, and then professional services, manufacturing falling in at second and third. Location of work, I also thought was interesting, these are residents of Union Township, but are 60% working outside of the township. So we have people that are coming here and then going away during the day for work. Out of demographics, we then move into some of the strengths and general characteristics goals for the township. First question was, what are some of Union Township's strengths? Highest responses involved access to the interstate and close to an urban center and the affordability. Top concerns facing Union Township, the highest ones were too many homes being developed, the tax burden disproportionately on residential basis, deteriorating roadways and public infrastructure, and the lack of sidewalks and bike trails. So it gives you an idea of what people's concerns are along with their interests. Next, gets into some economic development information, asking about what kind of businesses that people would like to see in the community. This was a long list, so it's spread out over a couple of slides. But very similar to what we hear anecdotally when we look at feedback from the community, the top answers were restaurants, one and two being, the first being casual sit-down dining, the second being formal or special occasion dining. After that, getting into retail businesses, which I think is what people have traditionally seen in the community. Then looking at sports, recreation, and healthcare-related businesses rounding out the top five. And then looking at what people believe we as a township should focus on in making our economic development decisions. Top answers in this category being attracting the kind of businesses and jobs we want, so those interests in the community and how do we implement those, growing in a way that fits the community, and protecting against the negative impacts of growth being the top answers. So it gives us some concerns of residents to consider as we move forward, looking largely at the negative impacts for growth that we've achieved in the last 20 years. Then, what do you believe the priorities for the township should be moving forward? The highest ones in this category were transportation, bike paths and sidewalks, township beautification, removal of blight and problem properties coming in first, economic development, more restaurants also rounding out some of the top categories. So it gives us an idea of as we work through some of the dollar spending and the projects that we want to work on, if we want to set priorities and would keep these in mind for what residents would like to see us prioritize moving forward. Again, with the three reasons you choose to live in Union Township, talks a lot about housing affordability, suburban character or lifestyle, and the quality of life, family ties, safe community, as all reasons people choose to be here. And that should conclude the survey results, sir.
All right, at this time, oh, first off, let me thank you, Ms. Ayers, you did a lot of work on this, putting this out and putting all this data together, appreciate that very much. So thanks for doing that, great information, it's good feedback to see where the residents would like to see the direction of our township to go. So before we talk, we'll move into public comments, participation, is there anyone that would like to speak on the survey? Go ahead, what were you gonna say?
No, I was just gonna indicate the same thing you did, which is if we can keep it to survey comments, and then we'll discuss the other topics later.
Yep, yep, so specifically to the community feedback surveys, anybody would like to chat with us about that, feel free to come on forward. Okay, seeing none, I'll go and close that. All right, gentlemen, open up for board discussion. Mr. Becker, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, as I read through all this stuff, and there's a lot of material here, I read every bit of it. It seems like no matter what your position is on a particular topic, you can find support for it or against it. And all the comments, a lot of it's vague. You know, I'm not sure, based on, you know, one person, for example, said they live in Batavia Township. Well, okay, but this is for Union Township people, so it makes you wonder, how many people outside of Union Township even answered the survey? We have no idea, and no way of knowing. So the unscientific nature of it concerns me. Also, there was, I guess, a large number seemed like of retirees, and I was just curious, like, what the, you know, how does that compare to the demographics of Union Township, how many people are retirees? And if it was, you know, a, you know, a good breakdown of the community at large, I don't know. So also, is this, Ms. Ayers, is this information published online yet?
Yes.
Okay, I hope not all of it is, because there was a page of email addresses.
That's correct, that's not listed, we're talking about the question responses.
Okay, good. Otherwise, the rest of it is. Okay, so, you know, people can read through it and draw their own conclusions, and I think what we're gonna find is, whatever conclusion you want to draw, there's data there to back that up. Some other thoughts? Mr. Luke?
Open floor for, if you've got any thoughts at this time.
You have nothing, no thoughts, okay. So, yeah, I think, I think everything that's going on with ODOT, which is outside of our complete control, has made East Gate area a complete mess. And I think I would speak for everyone, though, we can't stand it, and so the traffic is crazy. But it's unfortunately completely outside of our control, how that's going. But I hear, I completely agree with the feedback, and I would, what I heard was sit-down restaurants, unique ones, not your franchise-style restaurants. I like the idea of a bike path, and something that we did entertain, Mr. Luke, you said it a while ago, was something connecting from Milford up the railroad on Round Bottom all the way into Batavia Township. Oh, man, that'd be awesome. So I think exploring that would be a tremendous idea and thought, how to do that. And also the buildings, I think of the Mount Carmel area, I think of that gas station on Beauchamp, I think of the hotels on Beauchamp, there's a lot that need to just be, in my opinion, torn down and redone. So I couldn't agree more. And we could talk about that more in item three, as far as our funding, of what to do with that, that might help with that. But that's all I got, so. Mr. Luke, do you have anything else to add, are we good?
Yeah, I'll touch on that, so. Trustee Becker, I want to share, if you recall, we brought Ray Cincinnati in for a special presentation last year. They've got some really good demographic information on there. So I think, you know, other than like a Wikipedia site, given what the demographics are for the township, I think that their demographics is sharp. My recollection, the way that the demographics on age, population, way out, seems like we got a pretty good subset with this survey. But I hear what you're saying, too, as far as, Ms. Ayers, I don't know if we know exact address. We don't have, you redacted the addresses, is that right?
The question that asked for people if they wanted to hear back from the township is not listed online.
Okay, okay. Nonetheless, though, I mean, I think there's value added from the aspect of, you know, you're looking at, generally speaking, residents and commuters, those that frequent and come through Union Township, there's no denying that. We're never ever going to segregate those two fully. And, you know, it's kind of a tail wagging a dog as well. Because that's that population and traffic that makes Union Township bustling and busy at the same rate. It's that transportation, traffic, computers that, you know, requires ODOT to take a look at this area and want to come in for roadway infrastructure enhancements, and for the township to, years ago, anywhere to be in the planning phase and process of that, it's just unfortunate the way that all the phasing hits, that it's just like everyone feels like it's a tremendous amount of traffic. But, Ms. Ayers, I really do appreciate you taking the time on this, because what it really speaks to me is the communication the township's doing with the community at hand. I know, to my knowledge, as far as a board priority and directive, that's the first one I've seen. So I think that with process and time and some, I think it's a good thing to continue to do. I'd like to get some into the board, if you like that idea of more surveys and more engagement with the community. Trustee Becker, your reference of scientific nature, I don't know if there's like a more pinpointed type of, you know, question or something that you'd like to see, but I think I'd like to have the staff kind of continue to, I don't want to inundate residents and those in the general population with surveys, but I think it's good valuable insight, because what it speaks to me, I think what we all have is gut feelings. Here's formal dining, here's casual sit-down restaurants, here's sports and recreation, here's a high priority for paving, here's a high priority for transportation, hikes in bikes, and removal of blight, right? And I think we've been focused as a board on these areas, but then it's nice to get that survey and that feedback and that response. And it's a two-way street for communication, and we're listening to the residents and you're trying to align resources in those directions. So with that, I just, you know, in general, I like being able to bring in the information. If it's, you know, scientific and objective, or if it's a subjective field, we can weed through the chaff on that. But I think overall, it gives me a signal as to what residents of the township are looking for, so. Like what you're referencing, bringing back up, maybe researching into the, you know, at one time I told several people throughout the county, the pie in the sky type of idea, be a height by connectivity. Because I just, I believe like Claremont County, we should be able to have that, and it shouldn't have to be that you go to Hamilton County or something to get that. And then, you know, I know the county's trying to take some steps towards that, but it's gonna definitely be a long-term collaborative type of project to continue to push that way. But that's what I hear most from community members, they want that connectivity, so. So there's that physical connectivity, and there's also the physical connectivity, I think, that we've been doing with the parks and events. Really great, you know, pickleball tournament this last weekend, movie nights, some of that energy that's going. So there's multiple ways that we're, like, engaging with the residents, and anyway, love to see that continue to go and utilizing the website for that, so that's just my thoughts and kind of general feedback. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Ayers and Mr. Becker.
Okay, great. Anything else to add, Mr. Becker?
Yeah.
Please, go ahead.
So, you know, something else I thought about as I was reading, or I guess what came to mind as I was reading some of these answers, is, I guess what I was hearing were some of the voices over the phone when I was running for this office, I forgot how many, 4,500 phone calls or something that I made, you know, talked to a lot of residents and got a lot of feedback, and, you know, and things were across the board, you know. We should have dogs in the parks, we shouldn't have any dogs in the parks, you know, we should pay more apartment bills, get fewer apartment buildings. So everybody's got a different opinion on these things. But what I did find was, from reading through the surveys, that the, I guess, the theme, or where the, you know, if you're finding, look for a plurality, it did seem to line up with the phone calls I made and hearing from people and the survey results. So what comes to mind specifically with all that would be, there's a lot of angst out there regarding the overdevelopment of residential properties. You know, people want to see more businesses, you mentioned the restaurants, of course, but more people than not want to see fewer apartment buildings, fewer developments. And for what, two and a half years now, we've approved zero new residential developments of any kind. So I think the public appreciates that, and what we've been doing fits in with that. So it was just an observation, I think, that's all I have.
Well said. Did you, gentlemen, pull through the 249 comments that were the individuals written out? I try to summarize that, I've got, I kind of have a written response of that. I'll share it with you. So item one, preservation of green spaces and environment, many respondents expressed a desire for the preservation of green spaces, parks, and the environment. They emphasize the importance of maintaining the township's rural character and natural beauty. Two, infrastructure and traffic management, there were concerns about traffic congestion and the need for improved infrastructure. Response suggested better road maintenance, traffic flow, and the creation of sidewalks and bike lanes for safer and greater transportation. Three, economic development and business growth. Response expressed a desire for balanced economic growth. They want to see a mix of new businesses that can coexist with the township's rural character. Suggestions included attracting more high-paying businesses, improving retail experiences, and bringing in more restaurants, especially non-fast food options. Number four, community development, many respondents want Union Township to maintain its community feel. This suggests more community events, improved community engagement, and the creation of spaces where residents can interact. Five, housing, there are mixed views on housing. Some responses expressed concerns about overdevelopment and the need for more affordable housing options. Others are against the construction of more apartments and preferred single-family homes. Six, safety and crime, safety was always a recurring theme. Responses wanting Union Township to continue being a safe place to live with effective law enforcement and low crime rates. Seven, education, some responses highlight the importance of having a strong school system that prepares students for the future. Eight, recreation facilities, response suggested more recreation facilities, including parks, sports centers, entertainment venues. Nine, improved services, some responses called for public services, including public transportation and township, enhanced township maintenance. And preservation of a local identity, response emphasized the importance of preserving Union Township's identity and character of its growth and development. So that's kind of a general sentiment that I gathered from the 249 responses, so just want to share that.
With that, I yield back, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Becker, anything else?
No, I was just thinking, I misspoke, did I say we've been on the board two and a half years, it's a year and a half in.
It's okay.
Just wanted to correct on that, after I said a lot, that didn't sound right.
Yeah.
No, that's all I had.
All right, perfect. All right, we'll go and close item number one, and move on to item number two, which is the medical marijuana businesses in Union Township. Ms. Ayers, do you have a presentation for us?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna go over some basics, and we'll chat about where we want to move from here. But as we're mayor may not be aware, in 2016, the state of Ohio approved the production and sale of marijuana for medical purposes and indicated the state should promulgate rules by 2018. The 2016 law allowed for local governments, such as the township, to choose to allow the sale and growth of marijuana for medicinal purposes, completely restrict the businesses in local area, or restrict to particular zoning districts. Union Township chose not to take an action at the time, considered this zoning classification as specialized use. Current legal interpretation is that this is considered a retail use, should be allowed where retail uses are allowed. March 14th, we passed a second resolution with 180-day moratorium that is still currently in place until September. These discussions we have do not include two businesses that are currently licensing in place. We, as we indicated, we do have two that have licenses in place. One is the Beyond Hello, operating currently at 693 Old State Route 74, and Forest Dispensary at 4414 Carmel Tabasco Road that's currently under construction. One of the things I was interested in during the moratorium was to see public safety calls for service while this business has been in operation. So I asked Chief Reese and his folks to provide me some information on calls for service, just to give us some understanding of, now that this has been in operation for a period of time, what has been the implications on operations. When you're looking at calls for service in 2023, there were four fire EMS calls to the Beyond Hello, 11 police calls. Those police calls, you can see how they break down, it is suspicious person, road rage incident started in another location, one call to assist with the medical call, one petty theft, and seven extra patrol requests. Comparison, when you're considering the other businesses in that area, I had 52 total calls for service during the same time, 11 for Beyond Hello, 41 for other businesses. In those other business calls, there were nine alarm drops, two disturbances, 11 extra patrol requests, one lockout, two suspicious persons, two theft cases, 14 traffic calls. So while there have been some calls for service in that area, I can't see where it is out of line with what the other businesses are in operation in that area. Also, when considering how we want to move forward, I did want to do a quick survey of other similar communities in the area. You can see that in front of you, largely communities in this area have chosen to institute a total ban. On the survey results, we did take, have a few questions related to the sale of medical marijuana in Union Township. First question being, how do you feel about the retail sale of marijuana in Union Township? Broke out into a few different categories, but in general, it looked like 64.66% support the sale with some, with no conditions or some conditions. 39.9 say simply support legalized cannabis. 7.93 and 6.83 looked for, 16.83 looked for specific restrictions. 23.08% indicated they opposed sale of legalized cannabis in Union Township, and 12.26% indicated they have no opinion one way or another. Second question on this topic was if you support cannabis-related retail businesses in Union Township, select any further restrictions you would like implemented. Largely, the answer was not applicable because they chose to support the sale of businesses and didn't look for any additional restrictions. Then there was concern about the specific proximity from schools and residential zones, the amount of locations that are allowed in the township, and the additional revenue generation of fees or taxes from these facilities. Please indicate your primary concerns about the sale of retail cannabis. Largely broke down to legal sales to those under 21, the potential for abusing medical marijuana, and then increased crime and unattractive signage or buildings, filling out the top answers. One item I did want to bring to your attention is there has been some efforts to put on the state ballot an initiative to legalize the recreational use of marijuana in Ohio. Started by a group called the Coalition to Regulate Marijuana Like Alcohol, they collected signatures with the intent of putting a recreational legalization on the ballot in November. They submitted 222,000 signatures, needed 124,000 in certain counties to make the ballot. Their proposal was, would allow Ohioans aged 21 and older to buy and possess 2.5 ounces of cannabis, 15 grams of concentrates, the oil and tinctures that you sometimes see for a sale, could grow up to six plants individually, or no more than 12 plants in a household with multiple adults. This is an initiated statute, which is slightly different than what we will decide in August for issue one, so it would not be affected by issue one results. And as of about two or three this afternoon, the Secretary of State's office indicated that the proponents needed to gather an additional 679 signatures in order to be on the November 7th ballot. They do, however, have 10 days till August 4th to cure the petition and submit the necessary signatures. Given that amount, I would anticipate, although we can't guarantee that we are looking at this being on the ballot in November, they could not get the signatures, but with that low number, I would anticipate we will see this on the ballot in November. And that is all I have.
Before we get to public comment, Ms. Ayers, can you go back to the police report?
Yes.
Chief, looking at this, I kind of put you on the spot here, anything stand out, or is this business as usual? This is your, this is your wheelhouse?
From a public safety perspective, the calls are pretty indicative of the issues which we've had there, which is really not any. And I would add that some of these calls are misleading, because some of these are police-generated. In other words, the traffic stops and the extra patrol requests are really us patrolling the area, because it's a new business and because of the type of business that they do. And I've looked over the calls for service and reviewed them, and I have not seen any that raise any level of concern for the most part, I would even say they've been a pretty good neighbor, I wouldn't have parking issues or anything like that. And most of the call, all the calls at Beyond Hello, the calls for service have been during daytime hours. So there hasn't been any nefarious activity at night, really even in the blocks surrounding the business. So from a police perspective, we don't have any concerns at this point.
I've been to the Harley dealership like three times this year already, and my bike, and it's right next to there. Seems pretty busy, so I'm always concerned, I'm like, oh, gosh, hopefully everything's good. But from your perspective, based on data, what you see, everything seems clean, good, and no worries?
Everything seems good. I noticed in Ms. Ayers' survey that she did, there were some concerns about underage people obtaining marijuana. We have not hit one complaint in that regard, unaware of, so at this point, it hasn't been a drain on our resources or anything of that nature.
Fair enough, perfect, yeah, thank you, chief, appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we'll open up to public comments, if there's anyone that would like to speak on this specific topic about the medical marijuana businesses in Union Township, now's your chance, does anybody like to talk? Okay, seeing none, I'll go and close it, gentlemen, open up for discussion, Mr. Becker?
Well, pleased that there hasn't been any significant increase in crime and service calls, that's good news. You know, as I read through the questions on some of these, I could think of multiple additional questions I'd want to zero in on on this particular topic, but again, this was, you know, none of this was scientific to begin with. But it is interesting data, so. Beyond that, no thoughts?
Mr. Luke?
Yeah, interesting to get the public's feedback, and, you know, that's good.
And, you know, that's good. I think as we look at this presentation and the local bans, and then I believe it's Columbia Township, they've got the ban with exceptions.
They're one of the kind of early movers that had a ban in 2016.
Correct?
Trustee Kabiki.
Trustee Kabiki, so he'd reached out at one point to share with me how they, how they did their effort to have a ban, and then have the negotiations to be able to basically allow a tax, not necessarily tax, but a revenue share, to pay for potential community services needed, which is kind of an interesting concept. As to my understanding, Ms. Ayers, that since Union Township never put the ban in place, that's nothing that would be on the table for, for the township's consideration moving forward. But frankly, as that goes, gentlemen, I think with the, the resources at hand, it's nice to have that survey and have that feedback from the community, what you see there across, you know, all the demographics at least that were reported in the survey. And then seeing the, in fact, that there's what? 674 signatures remaining? That's something that's outside of our control as the Board of Trustees. I'd like to hear your gentlemen's thoughts on, on the future action of, you know, where the, where the moratorium and our temporary ban stands right now, and the fact that staff and adequate resources to address something that potentially is outside of our control in the near future. I think that's a question I'd open up to both of you gentlemen.
My thoughts are, for the future, is next business meeting, we call for a vote to extend it for six more months. We believe we'll put the vote in January. If I'm not mistaken, is that correct? We can always vote on it sooner, I guess.
March, so six months from September. Or excuse me, six months from August, so it would be February.
August, September, October, November, December, January. Oh, but regardless. Okay, so, so I say we have to do that, and let's just see how the vote takes place. They'll get 700 more signatures. They got 220,000, so they'll get 700 more signatures. It'll be on the ballot. Let's see if it passes, what the language says, what we legally can and can't do. And honestly, my opinion is moot at this point. So we'll put it on for six months, call for a vote, and then see what the state of Ohio says with the voters, and then go from there, so.
I agree, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so honestly, there's no more point in talking. With the future, what we do, we'll just put a six-month moratorium in place and see how it plays out with the vote. Okay, anything else, gentlemen, on that? No? Good, okay, perfect. Moving on, item number three is our ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act for Funding. Ms. Ayers, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, I will try and make this quick because I'm sure you're all sick of listening to me. But one of the other major issues we have is, as we are well aware, the township received through the COVID relief funds or the American Rescue Plan Act funds, also the state and local recovery funds, depending on which acronym you're using, about $5.1 million, $5.2 million, $5.1.01 million in funding that is meant to be used to help alleviate government, lost funds for government operations or alleviating concerns related to the pandemic. Have in front of you how we have spent or allocated money up to this point in time. When it comes down to it, we have spent $2.5 million approximately, having additional allocation out there for $680,000 remaining funds to be allocated, 1.8 and some change in total funding. This is from the Department of Treasury Final Rule, indicating that we may use these funds to replace lost, lost public sector revenue, so funds that we did not receive because of the pandemic and its economic downturn, respond to far-reaching public health and negative impacts of the pandemic, provide premium pay to essential workers, invest in water, sewer, broadband, infrastructure. Broadest use of these funds for the township is actually in that first bucket to replace lost public sector revenue. The Department of Treasury put out a general calculation for determining what lost revenue is, and then to the extent that your allocation is up to your lost revenue, you can use that as any government services that we would have otherwise provided, that we didn't because of the lost services, the lost revenue. Our lost revenue calculation is greater than our total allocation, so we can use the funds in that bucket moving forward. I wanted to, in trying to allocate these funds, I wanted to take some time to match what the community's priorities are, their goals are, their concerns are, with what the trustees want to accomplish, and then use that, these funds, to help allocate and address some of those concerns. So I wanted to bring back to your attention this question that we discussed earlier about what your top priorities are that you think Union Township should be working on in 2023. And this would tell you that the top answers are transportation, bike path and sidewalks, recreation opportunities, township beautification, removal of blight and problem properties, economic development being specifically more restaurants. So that gives, excuse me, and paving. So this gives you an idea of what residents want to see as our priorities, and could we use some of these funds to help address some of these concerns. This is another list, just to provide you what the top community priorities are from the survey, but then also the top community concerns. So some of these start to equal out. So obviously, on the community priorities, transportation, bike path and sidewalks. Type, top community concerns, lack of sidewalks and transportation. So perhaps we want to consider helping that cause a bit. I think these priorities give us some good guidelines for things we could use to help spend the money. Questions on that, I can see digesting it. Funds at the moment are, must be allocated by the end of 2024, fully expended by 2026. I do not want to throw up a flag unnecessarily. However, I will mention that during the last federal budget negotiations, there was some discussion, but not action taken, indicating perhaps their desire to pull back on funds that were not spent. I cannot guarantee that that's going to happen or not. I don't know, but I do bring it to your attention that there has been some discussion about pulling back the unspent funds. So I do have some concern about getting this allocated for projects if we want to do so, and moving them forward as efficiently as possible so that we're not under that threat if it were to happen. Some topics for consideration that I wanted to throw on the table, the first being the paving program. This is a provision of government services for which we could use funds. We traditionally spend about $750 to $1 million a year on paving. That accomplishes usually about four to five lane miles. That is a catch-up figure, I believe, for a period of time where we weren't spending that much money during, due to economic downturn and other priorities. Potentially, spending some of this money in bulk to catch up and get some additional funding done in one year, I think would be helpful over and above what we have allocated annually in the budget. There's always the need for additional capital purchases. So every year, you know, Chief Reese needs police cars, Chief Timeley needs new ambulances and fire trucks. We have cut up on that to a certain extent, but there is going to be ongoing needs in the next few years that we could consider spending some of this money for. In the survey results, we did discuss the addition of green spaces and preserving those as we look at doing park work, expanding Mount Carmel Park. Do we want to look at providing some additional funding for those park or outdoor green space environments? We have the continued opportunity to look for economic development incentives, so that's land purchases, roadwork, incentives, things that we would need to do to engage additional companies or restaurants to come to the township. Or another possibility would be to allocate some of these funds for local match for grant funding so that we could pursue additional opportunities on sidewalks, transportation, building needs, and use some of these funds to match funds for grants that always end up being more than we would like them to be.
Is that it?
And that is all I have.
Perfect, thank you, Ms. Ayers. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I will open that up for public discussion. Any comments? If anybody would like to come to the board and talk about the ARPA funds and the remaining amount, of what we should do with them? Yeah, Mr. McGraw, come on up, please. Mr. McGraw, I think you know what to do, so go on ahead, my friend.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
John McGraw, my address is 4604 Blaine Field.
Yes, sir.
Union Township. You know, Union Township did suffer some harm from the pandemic, as we all know. Businesses struggled, and the township had extra expenses. So I think it's right to, to look at these funds and, you know, find good ways to use them to benefit the township. My only advice would be, you only get one bite at this apple. So if you do capital purchases and add to the parks or whatever, that's a one-time purchase, the money's gone, and then you have the expense of keeping the capital purchase repaired in the future. My advice, if it was up to me, would be to look for ways to invest this money to bring new, either economic development or new, new things to the township that would bring in future revenue that you could use down the road for other, these projects like sidewalks. Or say you get into economic development and say, hey, you want sidewalks built in this area, Mr. Developer? We're going to require you to do that for, you know, economic incentive or something like that. So I know that's kind of a broad statement, but just consider that if there's ways to, you know, use this money where you can get investment money back to help pay for these types of things. That list you put up before was a great list. I mean, all those things are reasonable things to spend money on, but if you just roll through this money and it's gone, then it's gone forever. So just my two cents, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comments. Gentlemen, open up for board discussion. Mr. Becker?
Three things.
Yep.
Number one, well, not in any particular sequence, I guess, but I am concerned about the potential for clawback. Therefore, I think we ought to spend it as soon, as soon as practically possible, get through all this money. So we don't, so it's, you know, use it or lose it. I don't want to lose it. Number two, I don't want to be sitting on this for a long period of time with the temptation of, let's spend it here, let's spend it there. I don't want to be looking for new ways to spend more money. So therefore, number three, what I would like to do is simply use it as a supplement to the general fund, or maybe I should say in place of. So what we're currently paying salaries, as an example, our routine expenses that come out of the general fund or out of the jet funds or TIF funds or wherever it comes from, I think it's all of the above, is start using this ARPA money where appropriate, and for, I think nearly all of these routine expenses, it is appropriate or is legal, and go through it. And that way, that would preserve the general fund and continue to build our balances. And these other projects that we've talked about that come up, whether it's sidewalks, or grants, what have you, we can still use our general fund money. It's not like we have to use the ARPA money. Those are my thoughts, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Luke, sir?
I see your perspective there, Mr. Becker. In one sense, can you repeat your first point that you said?
The potential for clawback?
Yeah.
From the side of government?
Specifically, you said...
Use it or lose it?
Yeah, an S-word. Spend it? I'm just joking with you a little bit. I'm just joking with you a little bit. I'm just joking with you. I just joke with you. I just got my...
Where are you getting that?
I haven't heard you say that, so, no. I'm just, I'm just joking a little bit. No, I like the idea of the strategic capital improvements, and I hear that, where you're going with that. And I see your perspective of rolling essentially the balance into the general fund. You're basically saying theoretically, plus up the general fund, utilize those ARPA funds essentially first now going out, and you're still plussed up on the tail end of, what's the strategic capital investment? So I think there's likely a way to do both of, that's a good way to be defensive and protective of the funding and use that, but really still essentially, Ms. Ayers is going to track a figure that's into the general fund there. And to that, you know, to that aspect, you know, Ms. Ayers, I really liked what you implemented last year with having the department heads push their budgets up. Chief Reese, we talked about what do you need for cruisers? It's the traditional things you know for strategic capital investment. Because I think once we get a better lay of the land on that environment of those strategic capital investments, or, Ms. Ayers, as you've referenced before, essentially having a capital asset fund, I kind of view that also, gentlemen, as like a contingent liability fund for the township, so that when it comes time for there is a, you know, an emergency, et cetera, we've already essentially invested into that. And yeah, I know you can say, well, that's what you use the general fund for, but it's, it's all much more purposeful to basically set that funding aside for, if it's, if it's a slew of vehicles all of a sudden, or if it's a building or facility. You know, I think there's a number of different ways to get, get a framework or direction on what would make sense. But at the same rate, we, you know, we had, heard a public comment tonight on, you know, making sure to look at that from an economic development opportunity. And that's, that's the other thing. That general fund is there, there's a lot of flexibility to what can be utilized for it, so. Now, Mr. Becker, I think I like your sentiment there correctly as far as protect it and track it, and let's have a strategic capital improvement for it. Ms. Ayers, I think you present a very nice demographic of priorities there anyway for us, of concerns to the residents and also just the overall top priorities. So, I mean, I, for one, I think we need to get into a strategic balance on what our road requirements and needs are. 133 miles of road. As Ms. Ayers, you know, stated, we can't do one mile a year. I like, I really like the fact that we pushed it up towards five miles this last year and did the cost-volume purchase with, with the county. You know, but what's the right road cycle? And it's going to be nice to have that PC, you know, a little bit more of the PCI saying where, where the streets are at. So just a little bit of feedback for that gentleman. So, Mr. Chairman? Yield the floor to you.
Good conversation. And I actually, Mr. McGraw, we, we actually agree 100%. I, I think that's exactly what the fund should be used for. However, it would also cater to what you were saying as well, Mr. Becker. What I mean by that is, is for example, I've been hearing a lot with Mount Carmel, but not much what to do with it besides buying, I guess, the properties that are, you know, worn down and things like that. So one thing I would like to consider is, you know, we did this with the mall. I think that's going to be a home run. It's going to be a wait-and-see game. But potentially with, with Mount Carmel as well is, is basically coming up with a strategic plan for Mount Carmel and what we could do there. we could do there. Can we turn that to a downtown-style area? It's gonna take years. It took Milford a long time to get there, and they got there downtown at least. But I like the idea of, you know, what if there's property in Mount Carmel that nobody wants? We come in and buy it right there on, on, on the main strip there and then flip it. We spent the money, we flip it to an investor, get our money back, throw it back in the general fund. So now it's win-win. But I agree with Mr. McGraw on this. I think, I think we should really try to invest it. We have two Doras to give out. We haven't given out any Doras, you know? There's talk of behind Jungle Gems and RJ Cinema. I love that idea. Or somewhere else. Well, Mount Carmel would be a good area where, where I'd like to see that potentially. I don't know, when was the last time you visited Veterans Park or the Helicopter Park, but the playground, I sent a few pictures to Mr. Taylor, playground's not looking the best. So I can already tell where Mr. Becker will go on this one, but I, for one, would like to see an upgrade in that playground. The playground's pretty, pretty bad. So, but I, I like the idea of, of investing it. I do. Especially, you know, I feel like our police, we took care of them. Our fire asked for some of these, we took care of them. Our service department asked for some big quid, we took care of them. We gave some more money to roads as well this year. We've heard a lot of feedback from East Gate Mall. We gave money there to help push that along and, and drive the ball there. So I'd like to see it allocated towards Mount Carmel. The problem is, I don't, I don't know the answers, but if we need to hire a firm to come in and draw up a plan for that to see how we can make Mount Carmel a better place. But again, we spend the money, but then we get it back, throw it back in the general fund. So I like your idea as well. So that's where I'm at with that. Anything else, gentlemen, before we move on?
Nope.
Here it is?
Well, yes, Chairman, just to continue on your thoughts, there is no reason why we couldn't use all that ARPA money for the routine expenses and spend through it. And as these opportunities come up with Mount Carmel or wherever, to purchase that land and flip it, as you're describing, I like that idea. But I guess my point that I want to make is we can do both.
Just depends on where you want to go. But yeah.
Yeah, and, and we are up against a deadline with the ARPA funds. And we do, and in addition to that, we have the risk of clawback. That's why I want to get through that money as quickly as possible without looking for new ways to simply spend it.
Good point.
That's a defensive and protective measure.
Good point.
Because that three...
I just don't want it to go like, because the, the residents made it clear, more, more bike paths, more sidewalks, better restaurants. And I agree with everything that the feedback and recreational tile, type, you know, worn-down properties. I don't like to use the word blight, but worn-down properties, fixing those up. I would hate to throw it in the general fund and then we, next thing you know, we spend it and it's gone when we could have gotten on our horse and made some of these happen, you know? That's, I don't want to lose sight of it if we just throw it in the general fund. That's the only thing I'm thinking of. But I, I get it. I get it. So, go ahead, sir.
I'd like to add on that. So like, you know, specifically one area that we could consider, and that stands out to me for Mount Carmel is Ronnie Lane, you know, the property that's just, just west of that. You know, if the owner of that would be able to sell, something the township could do to vacate the lane, and then you have even more land there because that's the old car wash and old freshes location, right? So you get to build on that a little bit. So I, I like that idea. And I, and I agree. I think Mount Carmel is the true area where there's an old downtown style and feel that there could be. So, did you guys know that Tony Bennett apparently came there and sang decades and decades ago? Yeah. A place called The Hearth was there. I don't, I don't know much about it.
Hearth, the horror superglow.
Chief Reese knows. You got something to share about it?
For my time.
I don't know anything about it, but...
A rough place.
Rough place? Okay. Well, Tony Bennett apparently came and sang, because when he died, when he, when he recently passed, and some community members are speaking about it. So, anyway.
Good. Okay, moving on next. Gentlemen, we good? Okay, perfect. Next is item number four, fireworks regulation. Ms. Ayers?
Sure. This is Madam, Mr. Becker, brought up at one of our last meetings, had some concerns that seem to come up about annually with regards to the timing and discharge of fireworks in the township. In 2022, the state legislator updated the Ohio, Ohio Vice Code allowed the, the purchase, use, and local regulation of consumer-grade fireworks. That regulation indicates that you, as a private citizen, can obtain 1.4G fireworks, and I will get into minute definition of what that is, purchased through a licensed retailer, manufacturer, wholesaler, and discharge fireworks on private property on the following days, and then list a collection of holidays. Generally, fireworks can be discharged between 4:00 and 11:00 p.m., although there is some exceptions for certain holidays, New Year's Eve particularly, that allows for the midnight to 1:00 a.m. timeframe. 1.4G fireworks are not commercial grade. They contain no more than 50 milligrams of flash powder for ground effects or 130 milligrams of flash powder for aerial effects. So this are smaller explosions than what you would see out of like a Roxy's fireworks or those types of professional displays. There is also a difference in the type of chemicals that can be used in these fireworks because they're considered less volatile than those used by professionals. Local governments through this regulation can choose to limit the types and dates or prohibit the discharge of fireworks entirely. And that is all I have at this time. I would note, I did do some research trying to find different regulations. There is not a lot of these regulations. There are pockets. There was more in the Dayton area that restricts this. The city of Cincinnati has some, and the city of Fairfield had older restrictions on the book that they simply maintained. I could not find a lot of other places that had actually gone in and done some restrictions under this law.
That's okay. Fair enough. Thank you, Ms. Ayers. And, okay, this time we'll open it up for public comment. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on our fireworks regulations here in the township? Okay, seeing none. I'll go ahead and close it. And gentlemen, open up for board discussion. Mr. Becker.
Mr. Chairman, I've been thinking about this. And if, if the Fourth of July occurred on a Wednesday, under state law, you have eight days you can blow off fireworks. Eight days strikes me as a bit much. Before the law changed, even though fireworks are illegal, even on Fourth of July, people blew them off, you know, it was expected. You know, it was, we'll just say socially acceptable. Now that it's become legal, for again, not just the Fourth, but eight days, it's become ridiculous. And I guess what I would like to see, and I guess we could have the same discussion for the other holidays listed, but it seems to be the Fourth of July is really where the big problem is, is I, I guess the way I would like to, to see a change in this is just restrict it to the Fourth of July only, kind of the way things used to be with a wink and a nod before the law changed.
Mr. Luke? First thing that really just stands out to me is, you know, I don't know, direct, you know, forward traction on this, but I know there's community feedback that you, you know, you've received, Mr. Becker, that I've seen, that I've received. I know from having a young family, every year, you know, what it's been like, you know, no one ever wants to wake sleeping babies. And, you know, that's one of those things. It's like, you know, why'd that have to go off right there, right? How's that gonna do for the sleep tonight? But before I just immediately go one direction on that, I, I'd be interested to see, you know, what type of, I don't, Ms. Ayers, I don't know if you would like to or plan to do any type of survey. I wouldn't say let's do a survey just for fireworks, unless you guys think it's a great idea. But I'd like to see feedback, I guess, more, more so on that, get kind of a broader community sentiment of where, where that is. I feel like it's very, very sensitive, you know, as far as that goes. And I just, it's just, it's just an interesting one to me. I just would like to hear more, more feedback.
I assume the eight-day rule is because, for that exact, if you, if you intend to let them off the weekend prior or the weekend after, right, wouldn't that, wouldn't that make sense? Why that it eight days?
Yeah, the way it reads is...
I put that back up on the screen if anyone wants to see.
Yeah, so it's legal the third, the fourth, and the, the fifth day of July. And then in addition to that, the first Friday, Saturday, and Sunday before and after the Fourth of July. So potentially, if the Fourth of July is on a Wednesday, you've got eight days of legal fireworks.
Which, which I think probably also got us into the range of having Fourth of July on a Tuesday, right? Because you've got...
We don't control what day Fourth of July is.
No, no, I, yeah, I know that, but I'm saying it got us into that range of basically in the worst-case scenario. Because if Fourth of July is on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you're probably just gonna have the weekend, whatever that may be. But when you have it drop basically that, somewhere in that range of Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, those are likely going to be the worst kind of days of where you're gonna run into, there's a whole, like you said, weekend before, weekend after, the whole week of where there's fireworks. That's all I'm pointing out.
Got it. Got it. I realized this past Fourth of July was like 10:30, 10:45, and a fire, a big one, firework went off. And I realized I was getting old. Because I said, damn, I was like, you kidding me? It's almost 11 o'clock in the night. And then I realized, oh, I'm getting old, I guess.
I feel your pain.
Ah, I see both sides. You got dogs, you got little kids sleeping, dogs barking like crazy when the firework goes off, scares them, whatever. I get it. Then I see the, also the part of, well, 200-plus years ago, we fought, defended, won a war, became free. Wouldn't you be celebrating for all week? You know, there's that part as well. Then there's also the liberty part of it. Well, it's a free country, kind of off a firework. So I see both sides. So I'm okay with calling for a vote next month? Anything else, gentlemen?
The only, if, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question before you jump on that?
Please.
Is there any path to where something like that can literally be something that can be on the ballot that residents are able to vote on behalf of, since it's such a broad issue? I mean, require staff research, but just a thought.
Might require some additional research, but I, I think it's also a concern of funding and things. There are paths to put any issue effectively on the ballot. It's just a question of how you want to take care of that. I'm certainly fine proceeding however we want to. The only thing I wanted to bring to the forefront is sort of what Mr. Becker indicated on the wink, wink, nod, nod. Regardless of what we do here, the enforcement of these types of regulations are incredibly challenging. And I asked, one of the things I asked Chief Reese to be here for was to discuss that, if you would like to hear some additional information. But that, you know, inherently, what happens is, okay, somebody decides even regardless of this regulation, that they're going to set off a firework in contravention of the statute. Somebody calls a police officer who may be on a collection of a lot of other calls, gets dispatched, goes out. Well, the fireworks have already been shot off. There is little to no evidence of what's going on. It is incredibly difficult from an enforcement standpoint. So I, I don't know, you know, what the ultimate answer is here, other than to bring up that we need to acknowledge and understand that the enforcement of these regulations are incredibly difficult. I sympathize for people with small children and dogs. My dog, a little tiny 14-pound shih-tzu hates fireworks with a passion. So I sympathize with that, but I do also sympathize with the poor officers that have to go out there. And inherently, this is nearly impossible to enforce.
Chief, what is the week of July 4th like for your police department? What do you guys do?
Before or after the, the new statute came into effect?
Both of them.
It, it's challenging, as Ms. Ayers said, Fourth of July weekend, the days leading up to the days after. We would chase a lot of fireworks complaints. And with the way this new, this new statute is structured, you know, our officers are not going to be experts in what's commercial grade and what's recreational. And I could see a lot of arguments or antagonistic discussion with, you know, getting called out to a residence and, you know, trying to determine that. So it will pose a lot of challenges for officers. It would be a call-for-service nightmare, so to speak, but, you know, obviously we'll enforce wherever the board wants us to.
Fair enough. Gentlemen, gentlemen, go ahead and say what.
Yes. Out of that, honestly, and out of the freedom perspective and the enforceability of, again, and put myself in the shoes of a resident too, ORC, and then a township or a resolution. But just hearing that, sounds like a decision to more highly regulate that from the township, it's gonna be extremely difficult to enforce, and increase those calls for service if the police basically are trying to adhere to the resolution and take them away from more serious activities that they need to be involved with and engage with. And, you know, frankly, I'd, I'd be on the side of reducing the, the cost, right? So you're looking at reducing the calls for service. I think that's where I lean right now with, with hearing that.
I know you want to talk, but from what I heard you say, what I, what I read was, you want to limit to July 4th only.
Yes.
Obviously, if someone lets it off on the Saturday and July 4th on a Tuesday or Wednesday, it's gonna be like, whatever. I can't imagine us seeing our police officer out, unless there's literally nothing going on that particular night and they're bored. But it's simply changing the Union Township rules to July 4th only to hopefully deter some of the problem. Is that what I heard from you?
Well, 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 yes. So before the law changed, you still had fireworks going on, you know, before and after the Fourth of July. Just, of course, Halloween was illegal even on the Fourth, but it wasn't the, the quantity that you have running on now, and now it's legal. So at least when it's illegal, it does kind of put a damper on things. It's like, well, you know, if you're gonna light a fire, you have to be kind of be secretive about it and get away with it. Now you can do it out in the middle of the street and be in your face about it. A lot of the neighbors don't like that. And that's why I think it's just, I don't know, I, you know, obviously, it's whatever the public wants. So my thoughts are just limited to the Fourth of July. Is enforcement gonna be a problem? Of course it is. How, how, what kind of good job are we doing enforcing poop in the, in the dog parks? You know, it's not enforceable. And, you know, we can't have cops, you know, driving around all over the, the city or the township, you know, every day of the week or surrounding the Fourth of July, trying to bust people blowing off fireworks. It's just not gonna happen. It's not enforceable. That doesn't mean we shouldn't make it illegal, because illegal will put a damper on it. It'll, it'll at least put some controls on it. Or at least when somebody's hollering at somebody, you know, instead of saying, you know, F you back to them, it's like, hey, do you know that's illegal?
Good point. Very good point.
Thank you.
Yeah, well said. Anything else?
It gives, potentially it gives the, if it's a repeated type of call or it's a repeated, basically more than just a, a one-time thing, someone, a neighbor dispute, at least then the PD is able to do something. I guess it gives that enforceability. But then there'd have to be kind of, how much of the gray are they making a determination on as far as that's been a, you know, a multiple, multiply-repeated phone call-in type of activity. So...
I did have one final comment, Mr. Chairman. So at the last meeting, I, I said something kind of off the cuff. It was regarding, you know, what fireworks makes a lot of noise. It may not be fireworks at all. I gave an example of a 12-gauge shotgun, something I'm familiar with. But less familiar with, I also mentioned Civil War-era cannon. And after I said it, I wasn't sure if I was correct on that. And, and I had friends in Kentucky with those things. I thought, well, that might be limited to Kentucky law. So I did some research on that, and as it turns out, as long as it was manufactured, I think, I think the law stays prior to 1896, or it's a replica of a cannon from that era, prior, that was, you know, manufactured prior to 1896, they are legal. So part of the problem here is, you know, you could have somebody like with a Civil War-style can in their backyard, blowing these things off all day long. Cops can show up. Doesn't matter what day of the week it is, Fourth of July or not, really can't do anything about it, any more than blowing off guns in their backyard, you know, unless it's creating a safety issue.
Well, John, I've been wondering about that for the past two weeks. I'm glad you corrected that.
I'm anal. I do research.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one additional question?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we get off this topic?
Yes, ma'am.
What I'm hearing is we might want to look at restricting days, particularly around the Fourth of July. Typically, the regi, the regulations would allow for shooting off fireworks between 4:00 and 11:00 p.m. Are we okay with that provision? And it's just the days. I just want to make sure I understand what the interests are.
Mr. Becker, what do you think?
Yeah, I have the problem that the time's involved.
I just want to make sure we're, what we're looking at.
Four, one, it's fine.
Thank you.
So, gentlemen, I think, I think this is more really specific where, where I'd like to see part of this question go. Ms. Ayers, if we're gonna bring, you know, another survey at the community, again, I don't want to make it overwhelming, but we've got a long time between now and the next Fourth of July, and that's the inherent issue. I think it's rather brash to just go, go do something right away. I'd love to get community feedback. I think we target another community survey and make sure to incorporate a fireworks question, maybe after the holiday timeline, January, February. Might be a really good time to be able strategically push, get the message out, get good feedback in, and be able to give the police opportunity prior to the Fourth of July next year, so that we can either have, there's gonna be a rule in place, or if there's gonna be, you know, what it may be. But I think we'll be able to know very finely by the February, March timeframe. So I just, I'd like to see more community feedback and get it into a survey. Think you guys can support that?
Anything, John?
Um, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, put it that way.
How long, how long, how much organization does it take to throw out this survey and get the results back?
Um, let me answer that question a bit of a roundabout way. I actually had intended to do another survey, probably September, October timeframe. I would like to get some information after we had changed the summer event calendar about, particularly related to how people heard about events, what events they liked, what was interesting. So I had planned to do one in the September timeframe, because it would have accompanied, accompanied all the summer event questions. So I could add that effectively to what my plan was for the September, October timeframe. So we'd probably open in September, middle of September, close it mid, end October, and then have some results back.
I'm comfortable with that.
Same here.
I'm comfortable with that. All right. So we'll, we'll table that discussion until we get the results back.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Yeah, as a part of a, as a different survey, as opposed, I guess my concern was if this is gonna be a survey of just this one item.
No, that's...
Not sure how practical that is, but if it's part of a larger survey that you're planning to anyway, then yes, that does make sense.
I wanted to get some additional feedback regarding after we had changed all the summer events about what people thought and what the interest was and how that best reaches people. So we could just add this to that if you're interested.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Good, good. Okay, closing item four, moving on to item five, commercial vehicles on residential streets. And Ms. Ayers, would you like to open that up, please?
Thank you, sir. This was another matter we had brought up at the last meeting. Currently, the Union Township zoning resolution provides, I'm in section 532, that no commercial vehicles, including commercial tractors, automobiles, trucks, buses, house trailers, semi-trailers, shall be parked or stored on any property within a residential zoning district other than a completely enclosed building, except those commercial vehicles conveying necessary tools, materials, and equipment to a premises where labor is using such tools, materials, and equipment to be performed during the time of actual parking. So there was a concern about whether we want to look at this or make the legislation a little bit more specific to allow people who have commercial vehicles as take-home cars and the like to be able to park them at their home. In doing some research on the matter, I did want to bring, you know, currently, our resolution doesn't differentiate amongst different types of vehicles. I thought this table was interesting to consider the different classes of vehicles, largely having to do with the weight of such vehicles. So there are different classes for light duty, medium duty, light, heavy duty, or heavy duty, depending on the actual weight of the vehicle. And that's the gross weight, including all gas material, truck contents. Also did some research on similar communities, what you'll see in front of you... Uh, also did some research on similar communities. Um, what you'll see in front of you is actually the re, uh, regulation Anderson Township has. It effectively limits commercial vehicles, um, but actually makes a break in for those vehicles, which are fourteen thousand pounds gross vehicle weight or twenty feet in length. To say, you know, some of the smaller, um, vehicles could be parked, but larger vehicles have additional restrictions. Uh, there is a similar, uh, regulation in Westchester Township, and conveniently, they actually use fourteen thousand pounds or less as well. Um, so if we wanna look at, uh, changing a resolution, I would suggest we look at perhaps that weight-based, um, assumption. The one thing we cannot consider here is, um, the actual company or any of the messaging included in it as, uh, we want it to be content neutral. The weight provides us a way to make those, um, differentiations and still remain content neutral.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Okay, uh, I will open that up for public discussion. Is there anyone that would like to talk about commercial vehicles on residential streets and driveways in Union Township? Oh, please, come on. And then just please state your name and address for the record.
Tracy Tokovich, four, 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 seven Dogwood Drive.
Perfect, yeah.
So, I'm a plumber, okay? There's HVAC guys, um, there's electricians. You're telling them they can't go to work because they have a work vehicle. That's crap, okay? If they have a work vehicle on their own property, that's their property. They can do what they want. I'm a constitutional guy, but I took an oath. And that's what the Constitution says. It's their property. It's not public. If you're gonna ban vehicles from being on private property, right? I can understand if it's a semi or a dump truck. Let's face it, they're, they need to be somewhere else. But if you're gonna ban vehicles to be on private property, let's go get Walmart, Myers, and all them other companies that have trucks on their property overnight. You know, I mean, I mean, that vehicle is not hurting nobody. And that guy has to use it to go to work. So, you know, I mean, be glad he is, he's got a job.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Can I, can I ask him a question?
Sir, could we ask you one question?
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
You said you're a tradesman and that's, that's industry.
I'm a plumber, you know, I mean...
So, um, yeah, so as it currently stands, um, there's commercial vehicles that are banned currently.
I know.
I think what we're talking about and considering is, is being able to see what the board's interests is for flexibility there. And you, you referenced semi trucks. I wanna get a gauge from you, you know, cause what stands out to me is class three vehicles, class four vehicles. What is your traditional, say, HVAC electric, electrician and plumbing type of vehicle that you think fits what someone should be parking in their driveway?
Okay, so for instance, both of you live close to me.
Yeah.
So, you, um, look at Ben Franklin Plumbing.
Uh-huh.
Them little box ones?
Yeah.
Something like that, uh, extended work van. Um, you know, I can understand if it's a, um, sometimes a box van. You know, HVAC, they carry big equipment. But anything other than that, I mean, I, I could see a bus.
Like a bucket, like a bucket truck or something.
Or a bucket truck or, or, you know, or something like that. But then again, Duke Energy might have a problem with that because they have bucket trucks. You know, I, I understand that there, most places in Union Township don't have the place for it on your property, right? I mean, I could fit four cars.
Yeah.
You know, so I couldn't fit a semi or a, or a dump truck on my, on my driveway, you know? But, I mean, there's gotta be...
So, do you believe relaxing the regulation, the resolution?
I do.
To where something in the range of ten thousand pounds or even fourteen thousand pounds and...
Well, I'm not big on weights. I, I don't know.
Less, less than twenty?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking already of what I know as far as six thousand pound vehicles are F two fif, you know, F two fifties, you know, the twenty-five hundred series.
Cause I know zoning right now has...
That's pretty heavy to be ten thousand, fourteen thousand pounds.
Really? People do.
Right.
I mean, pe, uh, you know, they don't, they don't bust you on it, but there's more things for this guy over here to do than go around looking for fireworks. I mean, uh, uh, somebody could be robbing a convenience store.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, he got more time to do that than, I mean, a, and here's an example. My road, they like to fly down it. My mailbox been taken out, my yard's been trashed, my neighbor's mailbox been taken out, yard's been trashed. I call Union Township, they sit there for fifteen minutes, one time, and never again. Because people fly from back, from McGuffey. They just fly down through there, right? So, you know, I understand he's got other things to do. I told him they could park in my yard, run radar anytime they want, but they went there fifteen minutes. So, going around looking for fireworks or busting somebody because they have a vehicle on the driveway that ain't supposed to be there, they got more other things to do than, than playing games.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, does that make sense?
Absolutely. Yeah, we try to, we try to work towards reducing costs on calls for service.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, hey, thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
I don't mean to be hostile.
No, you're right.
Not at all.
No, no, no.
I get a little excited.
Is there anything else that would like to speak on this at all? Commercial vehicles. Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close public comments. Gentlemen, open up for the board. Mr. Becker.
Yeah, so the first thing I'd wanna note is that under our current zoning code that's in effect, uh, it, if I'm reading this correctly, it's a flat-out ban, one hundred percent, on any type of commercial vehicle, whether it's a car, truck, doesn't matter what it is. Am I understanding that correctly, Ms. Ayers?
It's indicating it would need to be parked in, completely enclosed. So, you could park them in a garage.
Fair enough.
But it is a complete ban on parking it out on the street or...
Or, or your driveway. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I think that's ridiculous way over the top. Um, obviously, that's, uh, something that's been, being violated every day in the township and for good reason. So, yeah, I think we definitely need to change this. So, there's been a question, well, change it to what? Um, you know, and I would certainly agree, you know, a plumber, electrician, anybody with a, you know, light duty truck, van, that shouldn't be any issue at all. That should, that should be allowed. I guess where I get, I, I guess where I get concerns is, you know, your bigger vehicles, the, the diesels, cause those can be loud. Also, uh, in the, in the complaint that we had, and we had the paperwork on, it was referring to the, you know, the beep, beep, beep of a truck that's backing up. And, you know, if that's happening late at night, that can be, you know, obnoxious. So, you know, I don't know what class of truck requires that, um, but, you know, I would agree that would be a problem. But that gets into the exception rather than, uh, you know, the blanket ban that we currently have on, you know, F one fifties or, or, you know, whatever else. Um, so, yeah, I think we should change this, uh, code and allow those vehicles in people's driveways and on the street.
Good, Mr. Becker. Mr. Loeb?
Uh, yeah, Ms. Ayers, quick question. Um, actual enforcement on this, would that not fall under zoning?
Yeah, it'd be zoning complaint based.
Okay, okay. So, actually gives them something to enforce on that, so, um, okay. I'm square with that. I, yeah, I think, um, gentlemen, what stands out to me is in the range of relaxing that to, to a pro, prohibiting the maybe class three or higher, or class four or higher type of vehicles, but, I know it's nothing for action tonight. Something for the staff to, I think, to take research on and bring forward. Um, so, that's my comments.
Yeah, currently, if you have a soccer minivan, it's legal. If you have a soccer minivan and you decide to start up Suzie's Home Cleaning Service and throw a magnet on the side of it, you are now illegal in our township. How ridiculous is that? Or Toyota Camry, or, you know, Ford Edge, doesn't matter what it is. You throw any kind of commercial lettering on the side of your vehicle, it is now illegal to be parked on your driveway. That is ridiculous. I don't know why it's in place, but we're gonna change it. So, Ms. Ayers, I'd like to have you put that on the agenda for next month. Um, I think, um, you know, we, maybe we could phone call and ask how it's going for Anderson and, uh, you said, what was the other township?
Westchester.
Westchester, uh, and see how it's going for them with the fourteen thousand pound limit. You know, you, you need a, um, a Ford F three fifty or Chevy thirty-five hundred to pull a boat. So, I would say, um, make sure it covers those. But, um, what a ridiculous rule. So, and the wording in this language is, is unacceptable. So, we'll change it next month and we'll call for a vote. And, uh, Mr. Tokovich, I completely agree with you and I second you a hundred percent. Uh, I think, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think we're on the same page, so we can move on there. So, uh, any more discussion on item five, commercial vehicles?
Happy to clean this up.
Cool, all right, perfect. Uh, last item on the agenda is going to be item six, uh, resolution two zero two three dash two nine. Ms. Ayers, please.
Thank you, sir. Uh, this is a clean-up matter that we'll, I will ask for a vote on this evening. Um, we'd previously, I believe in the June timeframe, taken up a resolution that was passed for, um, the alternative method for apportionment on the local government funds. This is the money that the state sends and then the county divvies up amongst local governments. There was, um, an error on the prosecutor's office side when they wrote the statute for, what is, five years, twenty-four to twenty-nine, as opposed to twenty-four to twenty-eight. Um, so I received a call from the, um, county about, you know, did we intend to pass from twenty-four to twenty-nine or twenty-four to twenty-eight? Um, the majority of other townships have passed the resolution from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-nine, which would actually be a six-year allocation. Um, so in order to clean this up, be eminently clear, I'm asking the board would consider passing the resolution. Effectively, that is the same as what we passed before, but would be a resolution from twenty-four to twenty-nine, as was passed by the majority of other townships. It does, still provides us the same allocation under this rule and resolves the matter for a period of time, as opposed to considering it every year. So this is mostly cleanup.
Great, great. Um... You're right here. Good, all good. Uh, gentlemen, I entertain a motion for resolution two zero two three dash two nine, resolution authorizing the adoption of alternative method of, of apportionment of the undivided local government fund, L G F, for calendar year two, two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-nine.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
OSHA carries?
All right, and our upcoming events, what we have going on is our next regular trustee meeting will be August, Tuesday, August eighth, six P M. right here in this room. Uh, we have Harry Potter and the Chamber of Secrets will be, uh, our next family movie night, July twenty-ninth, uh, which is this weekend. At Klepper Park, Kona Ice will be there. Is that right, Ms. Ayers?
Yes, as well as the Swinson's food truck. And the Claremont County Library will be there early doing crafts with the kids.
Love it, love it. And, uh, perfect, and a food truck as well. Uh, chief, national night out, that's your big Super Bowl for our township, August third, which is next week.
Yes, sir, next Thursday.
Next Thursday. Uh, Veterans Park, awesome. You wanna talk about that at all?
It's gonna be a great event. It gets bigger every year. Uh, it would encourage the public to come out. You'll find that the officers are very receptive. It's a great night to meet and greet with the police department.
Love it, love it, perfect. Uh, and then we had a reschedule of our concert due to the weather from the Second Wind Band, which is now going to be August fourth, which is next Saturday.
Friday.
Next Friday. Friday, seven thirty P M. And, Ms. Ayers, food trucks confirmed?
Yes.
Awesome, good. Could be a good night. Uh, anything to add for upcoming events? I don't think so, gentlemen. Uh, hey, we've had great pickleball court event, tournament, right?
Yes, very pleased.
Love it, love it. We'll keep that up and make it annual event. Uh, and actually, if it's okay, gentlemen, I wanna go back real quick. Uh, we used to have a, um, like a five K race in Mount Carmel, from my understanding. Uh, can, can we look at maybe seem like getting that back? It's a five K, three miles, you know? That'll definitely, you know, one, one day a year. Secondly, with all this, makes me think about the commercial vehicle policy. Can you have Mr. McCormick look into our zoning policy and anything that just seems out of whack? For example, the commercial vehicle policy, uh, for us to, to just bring it, especially for these kind of meetings, for our working sessions to see and we can discuss on them and...
If I may.
Please.
I absolutely agree. Uh, Mr. McCormick and I have had some ongoing discussions about a larger rewrite to the zoning resolution. I think there are a few things that are a bit, um, need to be modernized. And so, um, there's gonna be, um, at the zoning hearing, um, zoning commission's considering some current text amendments to get us as, to bridge to a bigger rewrite with the intent that next year we would look at a complete, um, and larger rewrite of the zoning code to modernize it.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. And then, uh, this just came to my head while you were saying that, upcoming events. So with the budget passing, um, our baby box is now legal if we decide to open it back up.
In September.
In September. Awesome. I'd like to have a big fat re-grant opening of that kind of boy if we could. So, just my opinion, gentlemen. But, uh, anything else for upcoming events? No? Good? Yes?
Yep.
All right, and, uh, all right, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I, can I have one quick go back? Have we, you got a, Mr. Campbell? Um, just your reference on, um, pickleball and where that may fit in the community survey, et cetera, which is good feedback. I was thinking on that from what we saw with over sixty people sign up and register, you're saying, the annual event. I think it'd be well-received and exciting when the new courts open in September. And maybe we do a fall pickleball slam. Uh, I think it was kind of, I know the staff had blown a curve with it, but maybe low cost overall as it was, but I think it'd be greatly received and the community be able to see, wow, this amount, just like we had the fishing tournament, wow, didn't know we had this. So...
Ms. Ayers?
General assignment of the board, I'd love to, love to see...
It's not too much to organize. I, I'm in favor of that as well. Great, okay.
All right, thank you.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion for us to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
No discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Were adjourned at seven twenty-three P M.
Thank you.